All right, now I'm gonna call the Finance and Law Subcommittee to order. It's Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is student activity accounts.
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, roll call, okay. I see you, so that's my roll call. Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
I'm here.
And myself, Mr. Martin, present. We have three items on the agenda tonight. And the first one is to replenish Taunton High School's student activity account in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents. And there's an update sheet on the back of the agenda indicating where all that money is being replenished, or what it's replenishing, I should say. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The good news is it's a good amount of money. That means there's activity, which is a good thing. Move approval on the transfer, the replenishment of the Taunton High School activity, student activity account.
Second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Fiore.
No, I didn't say anything.
Yeah, roll call.
Oh, present.
I'm sorry.
Present.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. On the bills payable, we have two. One for FY20, four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and two cents, and one for FY21, in the amount of seven hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-six cents, for a total bills payable of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Questions from my colleagues?
Will we approve the warrants as presented?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes also. And finally, the third item on the agenda is a facilities update. And Brenda is sitting in the middle of the squares, looking like she wants to jump out of the screen.
Well, I really don't want to jump out of the screen, but I will definitely give a facilities update. So, thank you. One thing that we have been working on is the Reading Street surplus books of books. Unfortunately, we have not been able to find a charitable organization that we can give it to. There was one, we appreciate, excuse me, the DECA students at Taunton High School for working very, very hard. And I don't want to take away their dedication in trying to find someone or an organization to take this, to take our Reading Street surplus away. But unfortunately, we couldn't find one that would not be able to just use it and not resell it. So I want to first thank all the students on the Taunton High School DECA program that did work on this. But we will be disposing of the Reading Street material. We are in the process of working with the DECA students to package up the Reading Street material, and we will be disposing of it in the next week or so. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is we have been trying to get in touch with the engraver that we originally had reached out to and received a quote to do the Oakland complex engraving on the granite. And unfortunately, it seems that we cannot get in touch with that vendor that gave us the original quote. Possibly, they've been out of business. So we are going to look into another vendor that will be able to give us an updated quote so we can move this along and get this done as quickly as possible. As you know, lastly, the facilities, we have welcomed our pre-K to five students and getting our buildings ready to go. Groundskeepers have welcomed our, spruced up our indoor, excuse me, I can't even speak, our entrances and our custodians have been keeping up with deep cleaning. And each school has identified two deep cleaning days per week. And our custodians are working very hard. Also, our teachers are working very hard welcoming our students. So our buildings are nice, safe, and cleaned and welcoming our students as we go through. And that is the facilities update.
Any comments from my colleagues, Mr. Souza, Mr. Fiore?
I'm all set.
Motion to adjourn would be in order then.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fiore votes?
Yes.
Mr. Souza votes?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes, then we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen, and Brenda.
Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order. Mrs. Fagan, if you could start us with the prayer and the roll call, please?
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. On the roll call, Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Palowski? Mr. Fiore?
Here.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida? Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present. And Mr. Palowski is here, if you want to call him again.
Okay, Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Okay.
Present.
All set.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of March 3rd, 10th, and March 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. And now we have our Student Council Representative Report by Phyllis Darko with us this evening. Hi, Phyllis.
Good evening.
You can proceed.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Today, I have numerous announcements to make about what's going on, about the ongoing events within the entire nation. Firstly, sports are progressing through fall two season, and registration is open for the spring season sport. This Thursday is Senior Financial Aid Night to help graduating students and their parents understand the financial aid process. The guidance staff will host a presentation on how to understand, analyze, and compare financial aid awards, including scholarships, grants, and many more. Also, since receiving a FAFSA completion grant from the DESCE, our FAFSA completion rate has risen by 12%, which has exceeded the state average. This upcoming Tuesday will also be the SAT testing day for juniors. Furthermore, many of our college-bound students continue to receive positive admissions to students. Recently, students have been accepted into institutions such as Cornell, Dartmouth, Harvard, and West Bling. They continue to impress us and make the entire school committee proud of their accomplishments. Moreover, THS students and staff recently celebrated their 31st Annual World Language and Diversity Week, which is annually sponsored by the World Languages Department. This nationally renowned celebration is designed to foster cultural awareness, encourage the studies of various global languages, and celebrate our own community's diversity. This year's theme was Open Your Mind to Language and Social Justice. The underlying message was to keep one's mind open to people who speak different languages so that they can become closer to others with such open-mindedness. This year, the series of events looked different compared to the past years since, due to the ongoing pandemic, the students and staff made the best of it in their celebration as the workshops were facilitated remotely. For the Student Council, we have planned a spirit week for the next week before students head off for people vacation. We'll be hosting socially-distanced outdoor events as well as virtual events. Monday, April 12th is Motivation Monday and the Tiger Sunrise. Precautions will be taken to ensure that everybody adheres to the social distances rules. Tuesday, April 13th will be Tie-Dye Tuesday, and a virtual escape room event will be carried out. Further details will be provided by the council later on. Wednesday, April 14th will be the Grouphit Day. Students will wear their favorite gray outfits, and a minor activity, our company, will be Show Your Pet Day. Students will be asked to introduce their pets and share pictures of their pets online if they're not able to do so in their meets. And also, Thursday, April 15th will be Jersey Day, and students will be encouraged to wear their favorite sports team's jersey to support them. And lastly, Friday, April 16th will be Black and Orange Day to end the week. The council will host a socially-distanced scavenger hunt as well after school to end the Spring Spirit Week altogether. We hope to give students something memorable before they head off for vacation. This brings me to the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis, you guys. As usual, have a lot going on. That's wonderful, and it's really great to hear about all the amazing achievements of the students, our seniors, who are going off to college. So thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Have a good night. Bye.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Good job. Okay, Mr. Souza, it's public input.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is April 7th, 2021, Taunton School Committee Meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Section 13A18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Taunton School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this public meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do so using the following methods listed below. The meeting will be aired live on the Taunton Educational Network, Comcast, Channel 9, excuse me, Channel 9, and Verizon Channel 23 in Taunton. The meeting can also be viewed via live stream at the THS TV Studio Castus.tv account. A recording of the meeting will be made available at the aforementioned THS TV Studio Castus website as well as the Taunton Educational Network YouTube channel at Youtube at THS TV Studio. It will also be rebroadcast multiple times on the Taunton Educational Network cable channel. Public input, live during the meeting via the telephone, and that should be up on your screen now, and that's 508-821-1221. Leave a voicemail if necessary, and include your name and number for the record when you call in, please. And public input via email prior to the start of the meeting is wdivine@taunonschool.org. And in the subject line, please write in "public input." Include your name and address for the record. This meeting will be recorded and posted on the Taunton Public Schools website at www.tautonschools.org. And Wendy, if I'm correct, we have no email as of now.
That is correct. No email.
Okay, and Brenda? Is there anything?
Nothing yet.
Okay, so we'll wait. Let me get two minutes up here. We'll wait two minutes, and we'll proceed after two minutes. Again, the telephone number for a public input call-in is 508-821-1221.
So Steve.
Okay, Ms. Moynihan, do we have any calls?
No, we do not.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we are, public input has now closed. We may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Next is the FY22 preliminary budget presentation. Mr. Grohl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I would ask Mr. Jakes if he could please share the screen and put the budget presentation up. Thank you, Steve. Steve, anyway, I could be co-host and control the cursor if I want to point out any particular items. Oh, sorry, Steve.
The only way for you to do that is if you're actually sharing your screen.
Okay, Steve, then I will just emphasize the points then. Let's go.
I can try to put my mouse over it for you.
No, it's okay, Steve. If you could just start the presentation. So as Steve queues up the presentation again, Mrs. Moynihan and I worked collaboratively to develop this presentation. We'd also like to thank our colleagues in the Urban Superintendent's Network and also our colleagues in Masbo, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, for providing us with the support. As many urban districts, you will see, probably took a similar approach in developing their preliminary FY22 budget. So if you go to the next slide, please, Steve. As we have done in the past, we like to always be grounded in our core mission or in our mission statement. So the Taunton Public Schools is part of our strategic plan work, which we unveiled last month in the draft form. The Taunton Public Schools is committed to providing academic excellence to every student in every classroom in every school, instilling a lifelong passion for learning, perseverance, and the awareness needed to be productive members of our global community. Next slide, please, Steve. If you could just populate the entire slide, please, Steve. Thank you. So the common themes are the five major themes or the five major buckets that will be discussed in this presentation. We'll spend some time talking about the impact of loss of enrollment and inflation, and primarily the enrollment decline or loss that we'll see throughout this presentation was impacted at the younger grades or the earlier grades, primarily in pre-K and kindergarten. We also saw a decrease in our middle school enrollment, and we did see a decrease in our Chapter 74 enrollment figures under the foundation budget. We also did see a low foundation budget inflation rate of approximately 1.41%. The second bucket, we'll talk about Chapter 70, and the budget will be less than the original FY21 Chapter 70. In an email, though, that I did share with the committee this evening, it appears that the House Ways and Means will be addressing this. So I look forward to seeing the release, or the official release, of the House Ways and Means budget as it's going to include an additional $219 million in Chapter 70 funding, which will be the highest ever. And it also will begin to fully implement the Student Opportunity Act at one-sixth of the implementation rate. So we're very happy to learn about that. We also learned that the House Ways and Means Senate Committee also established an enrollment reserve fund totaling $40 million. And we also learned that the House Ways and Means has increased unrestricted government aid by $39.5 million. So unrestricted general government aid is up to $1.1, almost $1.2 billion. So all that funding will go a long way in supporting schools and municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. We'll talk about the impact on the Student Opportunity Act. We'll discuss federal and state stimulus funding, SO12 and the American Rescue Plan. We'll talk about the CVRF, School Reopening Funding, and Remote Technology Funding. And then we'll talk about our budget needs moving forward. As we realize that for the next two to three years, there's going to be a heavy emphasis on intervention to address learning loss. Our staffing needs will not be going away. We've invested heavily in technology, so we'll have to continue investing in our one-to-one initiative. And we also realize that personal protective equipment will also be needed moving forward. Next slide, please, Steve. If you could just populate the whole slide, please, Steve. I apologize, I should have taken one more block, please. Thank you, Steve. So across the state, we saw a steep decrease in student enrollment. So 10, using the October 1st report from 2019, there was a total of 938,000 students. During this year, due to the pandemic, we saw a loss of, a net loss of almost 31,000 students. The greatest impact was seen at the pre-K and kindergarten level, and we understand why that makes sense. Now, learning in person versus learning remotely is very difficult at the early grades. And you'll see the impact on the next slide that this had on Taunton. So at the elementary grade level, the loss of 17,332 students is a 4.2% loss. And at the middle and high school, there was just under 1% loss of 2,834 students. Next slide, please, Steve. The impact on Taunton, please keep going. Thank you. And Taunton, and these figures reflect the October 1 report that you'll see later on in the presentation as part of our foundation enrollment. So our foundation enrollment decreased by 160 students, almost 2%. So last year, we had 8,113 students as part of our foundation budget. This year, 7,953 students, so a net loss of 160 students. And you'll see the financial impact later on in the presentation. 195 students were lost from last year at the pre-K level. 140 students were lost. And at kindergarten, we lost 55 students. So that's almost a 22% loss in the earliest grades, which we know that's when the greatest amount of learning takes place. The students are introduced to letters, vocabulary, sounds. That's just the foundation for education throughout elementary, middle, and high. 103 students were lost from last year at the elementary grade level. And again, this all impacts our Chapter 70. And at the middle and high school level, we actually did see a little bit of an increase where we gained 95 students, but it still doesn't make up for the 160 student loss. So again, these numbers reflect our foundation enrollment. It's not a one-for-one account of the actual physical students. The actual physical students in the building is much higher than the foundation enrollment because there are formulas applied. Next slide, please, Steve. So the impact that that had. Thank you, Steve. So how does that impact us? So our foundation budget, we actually lost $2.1 million in foundation funding. And remember, we are a 65-35% split with the state. So of that $2.1 million in Chapter 70, our foundation budget, 65% equals 1.4 million. 35% equals about 700,000. So we lost approximately $1.4 million in Chapter 78. And you'll see the impact that that has on us moving forward. And the city's required distribution actually decreased by 700,000. Next slide, please, Steve. So just to kind of make, put it in a way that makes sense. So the inflation of 1.14% would amount to about $1.5 million. Our student enrollment, the loss of 160 students, that's a loss of $2.1 million. That's a change, or a negative change, of almost 700,000. The Student Opportunity Act being funded in its first year brings in a total of almost $3.8 million. So when you combine the change, the 685, you subtract that from the 3.7. You'll see later on in the presentation, that equals the amount that Chapter 70 or the foundation budget increased by. Our foundation budget increased by $3.1 million. Again, 65% of that 3.1 comes to the city in the form of aid. 25% is the city's required contribution. So if you were to do the math real quick at home and divide 3.1 by 65%, it comes out to about 1.4 million. And if you were to divide the 3.1 by 35%, it would come out to about 700,000. So that's how we tie all the math and make sure it all evens out. Next slide, please, Steve. And what's interesting about this slide is to see where we were before the pandemic. So on the far left, on the orange table, you'll see the original FY21 governor budget before the pandemic. The foundation budget was established or was set at $105 million. So the city's appropriation and the city's required contribution in our indirect costs would have to total $105 million. When the FY21 budget was finally approved in October, you'll see the foundation budget actually decreased by $2 million. It went from 105 originally, before the pandemic, to 103 due to the pandemic. So now, as we come out of the pandemic, or begin to come out of the pandemic, you'll see that the FY22 foundation budget is really only 1% higher than where we were last year when the governor released his initial budget. So that's important for us to realize that this $106 million would be higher if the pandemic did not occur. So when you think about where we ended in October with a 103 foundation budget, and you see that it's up to 106, we need to take a breath and take a step back and see where we were originally before the pandemic. And that's why you will see superintendents and many educational advocates continue to advocate. And I'm happy to see that's being addressed through the House budget, that school systems throughout the Commonwealth be held harmless when it comes to our declined enrollment due to the pandemic. And when you look at our aid, right, the state aid. So you see the state aid across the state before the pandemic was $5.4 billion. When the state budget was finally approved in October, we saw that there was roughly almost a $200 million decrease. And when you look at where the state is now, as we come out of the pandemic, it's really less than 1% increase before the pandemic. So again, we will continue to advocate that we appreciate all the aid that we are receiving in the form of federal grants and state grants. But that goes away, and that does not get added to our Chapter 70 or to our foundation budget. That's why it's important for us to understand that even though we lost 30,000 students during the pandemic, those 30,000 students will be returning. And I anticipate that many of those students will return in the fall. And that's why we believe that the budget moving forward should reflect the return of those students to school systems, municipalities, like us throughout the Commonwealth. Next slide, please, Steve. And this is just a different way of looking at it, and you'll see how we kind of break it down. So the foundation budget last year was set at $105 million. We proposed last year, our original budget proposal, we proposed a budget of $97.9, almost $98 million. This year, foundation budget coming out of the gate is $106 million. We're proposing a budget of $97.9, which is not much higher than what we proposed, slightly higher than what we proposed last year. And that's without adding new positions. That's just carrying over all the positions that we reinstated, not the positions that we cut when we had to go 4 million deep in budget cuts last year. So due to our enrollment decline, the FY22 budget and the FY22 general fund budget are slightly more than the original budget amounts adopted last year. The FY budget reduction, $2 million, balanced on one-time pandemic-related funding. So we remember, we made up a lot of those deficits with our ESER 1 monies, which was just over $2 million, I believe it was 2.1 million. So the FY22 House 1 budget provides less Chapter 70 funding than adopted in FY21. In FY21, we received just over $2.2 million in Chapter 70 funding. This year, our Chapter 70 increase is 1.8. So I'll repeat. During the pandemic budget, our Chapter 70 funding was increased with $2.2 million, just over $2 million. This year, as we come out of the pandemic, as it stands, our Chapter 70 increase is $1.8 million. And that can be attributed to the loss of students, 160 students. Next slide, please, Steve. Keep going, please. Thank you, Steve. Oh, go back. Thanks. So as we talk about the Student Opportunity Act, I think you all know that these were the areas that the Student Opportunity Act was addressing. So I want to just kind of focus on low income. There are now 10 deciles, 12 deciles. There were 10 last year. There are now 12. We are in the 10th decile. And the formula changes phased in the Assume in District Special Education enrollment to 5% for vocational students and 4% for non-vocational students. So we see an increase there. Next slide, please, Steve. Keep going. Thank you, Steve. So the Student Opportunity Act reinstates a definition of low-income enrollment used prior to FY17 based on 185% of the federal poverty level. So pretty much what we should see, what we should see is if we were to take the FY16 low-income percentile, which was 54%, and multiply that by our foundation enrollment for FY22, we would actually have a higher figure. So instead of using the 4,208 direct certification number. if we were to take the actual percentage from FY sixteen and apply it to our current foundation enrollment, we would have a gain, or we would see an increase of two thousand, four thousand two hundred and eighty-two students versus two thousand four thousand two hundred and eight students. So that would be an additional fun, additional funding amount of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to this school department or to Taunton in the form of chapter seventy-eight. Next slide, please, Steve. So the declining enrollment often results in lower foundation budget amounts for those districts. This could result in needing less chapter seventy state aid to meet the foundation budget. The state uses hold harmless funding to protect school districts by providing no less than chapter seventy state aid than we see in the previous year. And that's what we have advocated advocating for, that we use the pre-COVID enrollment figure under the October one, two thousand nineteen report. The state has used whole harmless funding for many years. The FY twenty-one whole harmless amount would amount to three hundred and sixty-one million dollars. Next slide, please, Steve. And I just provide you here on this slide with just a sample of what the surrounding communities or some communities or like communities, how they've been impacted with loss of enrollment. You see, outer borough, our neighbors lost a hundred and ninety-five students. Bridgewater, Rainham has lost sixty students. Brockton, almost four hundred students. Ball River, just over two hundred. New Bedford, two hundred and forty-seven. North outer borough, seventy-seven, and Taunton, one hundred and sixty students. When you multiply that by our per pupil rate, which is just over thirteen thousand dollars, with that, again, equals two point one million dollars or one point four million dollars in chapter seventy funding that we are not receiving. Next slide, please, Steve. I think you need to go back once, Steve. Thank you, Steve. So the whole, the whole harmless enrollment, how that impacts us. So you see the inflation amount again of one point four million dollars. The loss in student enrollment is two point one million. So that's again, a change of six hundred and eighty-five thousand, a negative impact of six hundred and eighty-five thousand to the school department. The Student Opportunity Act funding kicks in almost three point eight million dollars. When we get to the foundation budget page, you'll see our foundation budget increased by three point one million dollars. The numbers tie. If we were to implement the whole harmless that we're asking, next slide, please, Steve, you'd see the positive impact to the school department. So inflation of one point four million dollars. We would not see a loss in student enrollment. We would see a change, a positive change of one point four million dollars plus the Student Opportunity Act. So you would see the foundation budget increase by five point two million dollars. So that five point two million dollars, when you take sixty-five percent of that, that's what our chapter seventy increase would be. Next slide, please, Steve. And again, just some more, you know, technicalities or some information to help us all be informed regarding the impact. So the whole harmless funding typically used to ensure that districts receive no less than the chapter seventy funding the previous year, usually caused by enrollment decline, which we have demonstrated. And the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act funds masks the effect of the pandemic-related enrollment decline. So the whole harmless enrollment recognizes unprecedented pandemic-related enrollment declines, notably at our youngest grades. It allows districts to absorb the return in enrollment of students with sustained funding. So again, this funding would be increased year to year as the caller adjusts. And it's a reconciliation of the actual enrollments to occur before FY twenty-three budget. So as we, if we were to be held harmless, that would be a true enrollment figure that could be used in anticipation of the FY twenty-three budget. Because I believe when we look at the October one report for fiscal for October twenty-one, it'll be very similar to what we had for October two thousand nineteen. Next slide, please, Steve. I think I've spoken enough, and I hope I've demonstrated the impact that the loss of enrollment has had on our funding and also how it impacts the Student Opportunity Act. Now I'll turn things over to Mrs. Moynihan and Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. And she'll discuss with you the stimulus funding and the impact that has, the positive impact that has, but also provide you with a lens on how this will not be, this is not sustainable funding over a long period of time.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. So as Superintendent Cabral did say, I am talking about, first of all, is our federal stimulus funds, which are the grants funds that we have received this year. The grant funds that we have received this year, the first one is called the Remote Learning Technology Grant, which was six hundred and forty thousand dollars. That, that money we used was to go ahead and purchase technology and also hotspots for our students where we ended up giving our students, each one of our students in Taunton Public Schools, a Chromebook. And for those students who needed internet access, a hotspot. Another thing that we, another grant that we did receive was the coronavirus relief fund, also known as the CVRF grants, which we received a hundred, one point eight million dollars. And that money we did use for PPE and various other items to get our schools ready to open in September for hybrid and remote. And then, of course, going forward as we go into fully in-person. So that is the two grants that we have received currently. And the other one that we will be receiving is seven point six million dollars, which is the ESER two grant, which that one is going to be, we will be applying for the FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. And this will be discussed a little bit in the next slide. But also another grant that we will be receiving is seventeen point six million dollars, which is called the ARP, which is another word, another, it's the acronym for American Rescue Plan. So again, if you could, next slide.
This morning, before we go on to the next slide, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank Mayor O'Connell for allowing the school department to utilize some of their COVID funds to help us in our efforts to return students to in-person learning. So thank you to Mayor O'Connell and to her staff for recognizing the needs in the school department and for allowing the school department to utilize their COVID funds as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. I appreciate that, and it's nice to work with everyone to help our kids.
Thank you. No, absolutely. That's fine. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for helping us as well. So again, here are the numbers that we have that have been awarded to Taunton Public Schools and the expiration. And some of these funds, which we will discuss in an upcoming school committee meeting when we do present a budget update, you will see that some of these, these grants have been expended and do not have any, any additional amounts available. So the first one is the Remote Learning Technology Grant, which expires in June of two thousand twenty-one. We, again, like I had said, we purchased technology and hotspots. The CVRF school reopening, the one point eight million dollars. That, again, it has been expended and it ends in June of two thousand twenty. The State Coronavirus Prevention Program, which is five hundred and eight thousand dollars, that expires in June, two thousand twenty-one. We are holding that for possible, as Superintendent Cabral spoke previously about pool testing and some other things that we may be using that money for. One that we will be, that we have received and have just about expended is the ESER Cares Act, the ESER one, in other words, that's two, a little over two million dollars. We do have a balance, and I will explain that one as we go further into the, into the budget presentation. The ESER two, the ESER Cares Act two grant, that one expires in September, two thousand twenty-three. So we do have some time to spend the seven point five million dollars that has been awarded Taunton Public Schools. Again, we have not received that funding just yet. The, but it's been earmarked for us. And then the American Rescue Plan, the ARP, which is seven, a little over seventeen million dollars. And that one expires in December in two thousand twenty-four. As you see, Taunton Public Schools and all of those grant fundings will receive over twenty-nine point five million dollars. It is fantastic, and we cannot say thank you enough. It has helped us get through some of the, the massive amounts of technology that we've purchased in MPP. But please, we do have to say that these items or these grids are just one-time funding. And they are not going to be here forever. So we just want to make sure that people understand that, yes, we are fortunate, but it is a one-time fund. Next slide, please. So as we go ahead and discuss the key areas of impact for the budget planning, and like Superintendent Cabral did state, and I'm going to turn this over to him when he discusses how we went ahead and did the budget planning.
Thank you, Brenda. So as part of the budget planning, what we took into account was, one, the impact of our declining pre-K and kindergarten enrollment. We also need to continue to ensure that we have ventilation systems that continue to operate at a high function in our schools moving forward. We also utilize some grant funding to close one-time budget deficits in FY twenty-two. We need to continue to purchase technology, update our technology, replace our technology, and also make sure that we have a well-stocked warehouse with personal protective equipment moving forward. Because we don't, we do anticipate, we don't anticipate that need going away anytime soon. We also realize the impact of retirement and health insurance, which plays a role in net school spending. We continue to advocate, and you've heard me state loud and clear, no hold harmless enrollment. And again, I'm happy to see that the House, the House and Senate Ways and Means Committee are acknowledging that and providing funding, and we hope that that will continue as it makes its way through the Senate and then on to the governor in the months to come. We've already addressed low-income student count, which we would advocate that the whole harmless would result in an additional four hundred thousand dollars to the school department. We want to make sure that our facilities are safe and also not only safe in the sense of security, but also safe when it comes to, you know, the pandemic and the ongoing pandemic. But again, we, as we continue to make our way out, we want to make sure that all the efforts that we put into our facilities, that we can, that they are sustainable, similar to how we've done improvements throughout the school department in maintaining our facilities. And then we'll also, last but not least, this is something that the school committee was committed to several years ago when we did a large Chromebook purchase. We want to make sure now that we're one-to-one, that we can sustain this for the foreseeable future. So that'll be sustained through purchases. That will also be sustained, which I'm very happy to report through a in-house Chromebook tech repair shop lab over at the alternative high school. So we're very excited to have that, you know, come into fruition in-house. Because I also believe it'll lend itself well into jobs for the future, having that, having that class or having that club at the alternative high school. Next slide, please, Steve. And I'll turn things back over to Mrs. Moynihan.
Thank you. So our budget timeline, how this all came about. We began with the governor's budget that released in January, two thousand twenty-one. And as you can just see for comparison reasons, for chapter seventy for FY twenty-one, which is this current school year, the governor released a two point one million dollars in chapter seventy funding for Taunton Public Schools. This year's chapter seventy funding is one point eight million dollars, where there you can see a significant difference of three hundred and five thousand dollars. Then from there, after the governor's budget, as Superintendent Cabral did mention, the house one budget will come about, and it's looking like it's about to be released around April, April fourteenth. And that will hopefully be bringing additional monies to, to our district. Once that has been released, the Senate budget does go into them, and they will go ahead and review the budget, which then turns into the conference committee budget in June, two thousand twenty-one. Then the process goes into vetoes, overrides in June. And then hopefully, a final budget will be released in the timeframe of June or July of two thousand twenty-one. Next slide, please. So here is the governor's budget in the chapter seventy. And as you see, we see, we see this chart every year, and things do change. And how our chapter seventy monies comes about is I do have to remiss is that, as Superintendent Cabral has stated, we have seen significant amounts of money gone because of our enrollment that's gone down. Now, significant enrollments that have gone down, as Superintendent Cabral did state, is we have seen some changes from pre-K students, K students, and our elementary due to the pandemic. And many of the families did choose to either homeschool or not send their students at all, as kindergarten is not considered to be mandatory. So we did see that happen, and that is one of the reasons why we did see a reduced number in enrollment. And then also, as though we didn't see a high, we did see an increase in the high school. We did receive less money due to the CVTE number as it's, as I believe it's column number seven. For the vocational, we saw a decrease there as well. So unfortunately, because of that, and the certain percentages that we have as each formula is, is given to each number, we did see a significant reduction. And as you see right now for chapter seventy and FY twenty-two, our enrollment is seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-three students. As you have been, as we did hear, it is a less of a hundred and sixty students compared to last year, which is a significant amount of money. Our foundation budget per pupil is thirteen thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Please know that, again, how does the state come about this? It all comes about through all of those factors, the, a certain percentage goes ahead for low income. So all of the numbers, it depends upon how many numbers of students are in a category, and then the percentage of what the state offers per student in that funding. And that's how we get the thirteen thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Again, it is a per pupil, is a state number, and it is not considered as any additional money at all. Next slide, please. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Cabral.
My favorite, net school spending. So as we've continued to mention time and time again, now, because of our income level and because of the needs of our community, now the majority of our funding comes in the form of state aid. So sixty-five percent of our funding comes in the form of state aid. So combined, the required net school spending, all the funding that has to be spent on education by the city is a hundred and six million dollars, or one hundred and six point six million dollars, almost a hundred and seven. The state of that hundred and six million dollar total, the state contributes sixty-eight point five million, which is roughly sixty-five percent of that hundred and six million dollar total. The city's required share is thirty-eight point one million dollars. So when you combine both numbers, they equal a hundred and six. So this is the famous triangle, the net school spending triangle that I believe Mr. Martin and Dr. Kroto developed years ago that we continue to follow. So when you, when you take a look below, you see we have the foundation enrollment for FY twenty-two and the foundation enrollment for FY twenty-one. And you see the difference that Mrs. Moynihan already discussed in the previous slide. You see the foundation budget that has been released now, a hundred and six million dollars. And then compared to FY twenty-one, which was approved in October, not the original in January. Again, this is what was finally approved in October is a hundred and three million dollars. The required district, district contribution, the share from the city, increased by less than two million dollars, I think, I believe it was one point four. So thirty-eight million this year, thirty-six last year. Chapter seventy-eight increased by one point, by, I believe, one point seven, one point eight million. So from sixty-six, six to sixty-eight, four. So the state will send the city of Taunton a check in the amount of sixty-eight million dollars. So the required net school spending is a hundred and six million dollars compared to last year, which was approved in October of a hundred and three million dollars. And under the original governor's budget, it was a hundred and five million dollars. Next slide, and I also provide you with the inflation factors. You'll see that the FY twenty-two inflation factor is the lowest since fiscal eighteen. And we also, as Mrs. Moynihan mentioned, you see the economic impact where we received additional dollars and where we lost dollars due to declining enrollment or increased enrollment. So Taunton's foundation budget increased by three point one million dollars. The required local contribution increased by one point two million, and the chapter seventy-eight increased by one point eight six. When you add those two numbers together, it equals the three point one. Next slide, please, Steve. Ms. Moynihan, you're up.
Sure. So here, we're to go into just another version of explaining the operating budget. So going from the foundation budget to the expected operating budget. So as you see, we have them into columns. Our chapter seventy state aid. In FY twenty-one, current school year, we finally received our initial chapter seventy funding in October of two thousand twenty, which was sixty-six point six million dollars. FY twenty-two's budget, currently the governor saying that this Taunton Public Schools will receive sixty-eight point four million dollars. That's an increase of one point eight million, which is two point seven nine percent increase in chapter seventy. For the city contribution, again, city contributions is thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent of the net school spending. You will see in FY twenty-one, the city was asked to pay thirty-six point eight million dollars this year, currently through the governor's budget, it's thirty-eight million dollars. That's a change of, an increase of one point two million dollars, which is a three point three seven That's a change of, an increase of $1.2 million, which is a 3.37% increase. So you add both chapter 70 and the city's contribution, which will receive how much money Taunton Public Schools will be able to spend. And you have FY21, we had $103,531,515 currently for FY22. The initial governor's budget is $106.6 million, which is a change of an increase of $3.1 million, which is an increase of 3%. Next slide, please. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. So in order to meet net school spending or to be at 100% net school spending, I always find this slide to be very helpful for myself, and I hope it's helpful for the school committee and those watching at home. So again, the required net school spending is $106 million. We always have talked about indirect costs. So what are those tasks? What are those jobs or what are those services that the city provides to the school department? So in total, there is about $25 million worth of indirect costs. However, not all indirect costs are eligible. Transportation and crossing guards are not eligible. So that is something that we have to deduct from total indirect costs. So when you back out the $9 million, which we budgeted for transportation and crossing guards, what is eligible as indirect cost is just under $16 million, 15.9. So in order to, in order to determine what the minimum amount the city needs to contribute to education, you subtract what is eligible for indirect costs from the required net school spending. So real simple math, 106 minus 15.9 equals $90,682,847. So for the city to me, it's 100% net school spending requirement. They would have to provide us with an appropriation in the amount of that total or that figure on the third arrow, 90,682,847. What the city's budget manager has discussed with me and what we've discussed with, with the mayor is that the city is committed to contributing the current year's appropriation plus the chapter 70 increase. So if you take the current appropriation, which is 90,414,145 plus the chapter 70 increase of $1.8 million, we can expect an appropriation in the amount of $92,273,041. And that puts the city at 102% net school spending. Now, we all understand, school department, city, city department, everyone is dealing with the same need in the same circumstances due to the pandemic. So we understand, but we also want to acknowledge that the city unfortunately is backsliding from a high of 106% net school spending to 102% net school spending, which a lot of that can be attributed to the fact that the retiree health insurance has been fully implemented at 25% over a four-year period of time. So with the only increase being the chapter 78, I would anticipate that we will continue to see a backslide towards 100%. But again, I want to acknowledge and I want to be fair to everyone on the city side too, that we are all in the same boat, and there's only so many dollars to go around to each department. We all have needs that need to be met. And again, I think when you see our budget, we were very thoughtful. The increases that we're asking for are the lowest that you'll see in, I think, eight years. So we just want to be able to carry what we currently have in place forward and begin to bring back what we lost last year. Next slide, please, Steve. And I think this is a good depiction, a good indicator of where we are. And I do want to point out that fiscal '21 and fiscal '22, now fiscal '21 has not been audited yet because we have not closed the year. So that will not be, the end of the year report doesn't get released until August of 2021. And that audit usually isn't done until October, November. So again, that has to be audited yet, and we have to close out the year. In fiscal '22, that's a projection. And if we do get additional chapter, chapter $70, that figure will increase. If we do get any additional funding, if the city were to provide us with additional funding, then that would increase the 100%, the 102% that you see there. So these are forecasts, the 105.39 for FY21 could go up, could go down. Again, it hasn't been audited yet. What is fixed is everything from fiscal 13, which you see we were, the city was under its 100% requirement through fiscal 20. I believe fiscal 20 has been audited and certified. So those last two years are still in question. And, and I, informational questions often asked is how many districts are meeting net school spending or how many districts are not meeting that school spending? So for fiscal 19, there were 318 reporting districts. Believe it or not, Mr. Martin, some districts have still not completed the end of the year report. So in FY19, 318 reporting districts, nine districts were below 100% net school spending. The FY19 net school spending average was 129.9%. For FY20, there were 281 reporting districts. Three districts are projected to be below 100% net school spending. The FY20 net school spending average for fiscal 20 is 132%. And again, you can just take a look at where we are on the chart in comparison to those other communities. And again, that's not an apples-to-apples, urban-to-urban comparison. That's all communities that reported. If the committee would like, we could provide you with some information comparing us to other like urban districts. Next slide, please. Ms. Moynihan, you're up.
Sure. So here is our preliminary budget overview. So the FY22 proposed expenditures for the next school year is, right now, we are, preliminary budget is $97,991,621. This is everything we currently have right now in this school year, and then rolling it over to next school year FY22. So the FY22 city appropriation, which is the money that we went ahead and the city is going to be able to give to, to the, to the school department, is $92,273,041. Currently, the FY22 revenue that the school department has, we have circuit breaker, which is about 75% reimbursement, which is $30.2 million. Our revolving account usually is about $1 million that we carry over. Grant carryover is about $500,000. Our cable commission is $100,000. McKinney-Vento is $150,000. And currently in the SRT2, we have about $703,928. So all of those numbers together, our revenue is $5,718,580. Now, just to let you know, is there any potential revenue that Taunton Public Schools may get now that may be rolled over to the FY22? Yes, there is a possibility, and the possibility is considered to be the circuit breaker transportation reimbursement. Now, right now, we can't really say if we will or will not, but right now, Amada Grant has been cracking those numbers for us and has looked about everything, and she's hoping that possibly we could get about $300,000 to $500,000 in additional circuit breaker transportation reimbursement. But again, we won't know those numbers. So if you take the, the FY22 city appropriation of $92.2 million, adding the, the, the revenue of $5.7 million, add those two, we have a balanced budget of $97,991,621, excuse me. So we have basically a balanced budget. We, right now, there is a total balance. Next slide, please. So here is what we have as we go forward in comparing, comparing last year, which is our current school year, and then for the next school year. And looking at the first one, salary, we see a difference of an increase of $2.6 million in salary, and that's about 3.8% increase. Please know that that does not mean that everybody in the district is receiving a 3.8% salary raise. Please know that this includes sick leave buyback, any negotiated increases that we have in our unions, and that also includes step increases and also for subs as well. So that salary does encompass quite a bit more than just what people may think. Special ed tuition, as you will see, the increase between FY21 and FY22 is an increase of about $254,479, which is an increase of about 3%. Our transportation is an increase of $338,000. And as you see there, that the reason why it is a little bit more than what we have, because as you know, we did award our transportation contract for the next five years of H&amp;L Bloom. Our awarding was $8.4 million for the next school year. But we'd like to go ahead and add a little bit more money because we really don't know what could come in. In other words, we might have to add a little bit more money for McKinney-Vento because we might have more kids that considered to be homeless. We may have a student that comes in mid-year and needs special ed transportation. A student may break a leg and then may need a wheelchair van. So that is the reason why we add a little bit more money. So you see our transportation increases to about 4%. Our utilities, and I'll explain a little bit too, is I went ahead and I compared our utilities for the last three to four years. Because if you think about it, last year, we ended up leaving in March. So last year, we really couldn't, can really compare it to apples-to-apples, apples. So it was really saying, okay, what were the last three years looking like? And we sharpened our pencils and went ahead and trimmed our budget down to, and decreased it to almost 7% in utilities. Our contracted services between FY21 and FY22 was an increase of $110,000, which is an increase of 6%. Our supplies, we pretty much level funded our supplies, where you see some decreases of them, and that was a slight decrease of 0.63%. Maintenance of our buildings, we trimmed up again because we, I have been working with our city, city building department, and we went ahead and trimmed that a little bit and did that as a decrease of $119,000, which is just about a 21% decrease. So in other words, all of these different categories, you'll see FY21 of our budget was $95 million. And currently, our preliminary budget for FY22 is $97,991,621, which is an increase of 3%, 3.1%. And if you look onto the next slide, you will see that currently our increase of FY20 into FY22, it looks as if we are really are one of the lowest increases in the last five years because of course, last year was a pandemic year. We really can't really look at that one. But if you look at our expenditures, our requested FY22 expenditures represent just an increase of 3.1%, which is the lowest in overall all those years. Next slide, please. Superintendent Cabral.
And I guess this can be taken one of two ways. I guess this could be taken as one, we do run a very lean operation, or two, we run a very lean operation and we overextend ourselves. So I think you've heard me mention of time and time again where we stand compared to urban schools when it comes to per pupil expenditures. So the column or the chart on the left is our actual per pupil expenditure. This is not to be confused with our chapter 70 per pupil. So this number reflects is chapter 70 grants and revolving, the total funds spent on students. So for fiscal '18, the average was $13,916 spent per student. For fiscal '19, the average was $14,529. I believe if you were to look at Taunton, Taunton Public Schools continues to be in the bottom 15% for per pupil funding of all districts in the Commonwealth, in the second lowest when compared against all urban districts for our per pupil expenditure. But yet, again, I believe we turn out an excellent product. It just makes you think how much better that product could be if we were near the middle of the pack when it comes to our urban counterparts or the middle of the pack with the state average. I also look at our admin, per pupil administrative costs, which COVID, I hate to say, COVID has exposed us in many areas. You've heard me say that. So when it comes to our per pupil, per pupil admin costs, I believe we are number two. So we're in the bottom 1%. Our per, we spend about $279 per pupil when it comes to our administrative costs. So when, again, when Mrs. Moynihan is overseeing facilities and finance, and Mrs. Perry is overseeing transportation, student services in Title IX, Mrs. Mitchell, legal and personnel, we all wear many hats. And again, it's, we get the job done, and we believe in putting the resources into our classrooms. We believe in putting the resources into the hands of our teachers. We believe in putting the resources in the form of educators. But it does have an impact, and it does during times of crisis. It does expose the school committee. So TPS continues to be in the bottom 1% for per pupil admin costs of all districts in the Commonwealth, which is the lowest when compared to all urban districts. Next slide, please.
So if you look at the FY20 City of Taunton General Fund, so this is pretty much what the city of Taunton spends on all of their departments. And yes, you see the big blue chunk, that is education. And educate, the city of Taunton does go ahead and spend in FY20, spent $92,188,776 on education. That chunk, which 96% of it, which is $88.2 million, went to Taunton Public Schools, and the other 4% went to Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie, which is about $3.9 million. Now, again, that's about 43% of their general budget goes to the school department. Now, yes, Taunton Public Schools is the largest employer for the city of Taunton. But the state average, which is the percentage of school expenditures of the city and town's budget across the Commonwealth, the state average is just about 47%. So again, 47% of their city's or town's budget went ahead and went to the city's schools. Next slide, please. So last year at this time, we were going through some challenges, and the school committee really had some big challenges to go forth in front of them. And here were some of the budget reductions that we did put forth. And the school committee did agree to do these, these budget rate allocations. I don't have to go ahead and revisit these. These aren't very pretty, but we did go ahead and reduce our budget by $3.6 million. And so right now, where we are currently, again, like I stated before, we are taking everything we currently have and moving forward. And again, as we move into the House Two budget and all, and going through grants, we are hoping that any new funding that we get from the House Two and grants, maybe we can go ahead and start bringing back some of the things that we had to go ahead and reduce for this current school year. Next slide, and I turn it over to Superintendent.
Steve, if you could go back and stay on that slide. So, and I think Mrs. Moynihan did an excellent job articulating the hard work that this school committee went through. So just do the real math real quick. You notice that we had to cut 3.6 million, and our final chapter 70 increase was 2.1 million. So we really cut two and a half million dollars out of our budget. So, and we were able to, a lot of these people that were in these jobs came back to us in the form of classroom educators. So we like to bring a lot of these positions back, but they might be coming back in a different capacity, or they might be coming back in a, in a different way. So that is something when we get into our budget workshop on the 28th that we'll discuss and talk about how we can utilize some of our grant funding, our federal funding to begin phasing these positions back over a two-to-three-year time period as increase, as our funding increases under Student Opportunity Act. Thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. Next slide, please, Steve. My fun, my fun time, I get to gloat a little bit, so I guess I'll, I'll talk about that right now. So the state continues to pay a lion's share of the 64% of our educational expenses. You know, Taunton Public Schools experienced a significant budget cut in reallocation of funding due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Federal and state COVID relief grant funding was used to balance and offset the budget shortfall. I don't know what we would have done without ISF funding. I think the cuts would have been much deeper than what we experience now. And I think the education model that we have currently in place with all the technology and all the one-to-one devices would not look anywhere near what we have in place. It probably would have been a continuation of the packets and the limited use of Chromebooks that we saw between March and June of last year. So we are very thankful. So we are very thankful and very grateful for the model that we have currently in place. So again, I want to reiterate that the Taunton Public Schools now continues to be at the bottom 15% for per pupil funding of all districts in the Commonwealth. Out of the 320 school systems, Taunton Public Schools continues to have one of the lowest per pupil administrative costs. But yeah, I think everyone on this committee will agree that we continue to turn out some amazing work despite the limited resources as we continue to extend and empower leaders, educators in our buildings and empower stakeholders in the community to assist us with our planning in rolling out every plan throughout this pandemic. The annual increases in spending over the past eight years is about 4%. The new house budget figures will be available in April, I believe, April 14th. And I'm excited to see the impact of this new additional funding under the House Ways and Means Senate Committee. And the FY22 budget reflects a gradual reinstatement. As you, as I'm sure you've looked through the line item budget, you'll see that we're trying to gradually bring back those lines that we zeroed out last year in a thoughtful way. However, if for some reason, chapter 70 were to go south and were to lose funding, we would have to reduce those lines that we're trying to replenish. And as it's constantly constituted, currently constituted right now, I am proud to state that this preliminary budget does not reflect any reductions at this point in personnel. We are carrying over all the personnel we currently have in place. And what I should have mentioned also in my conversations with the city's budget manager and the mayor is right now, our chapter 70 increase is $1.8 million. If our chapter 70 increase increases, we will also get the increase. So the 1.8 would be the floor if it stays at 1.8. If it increases, we would get the additional funding in the form of chapter 70. So we are grateful and thankful for the city for that commitment. Knowing that we will be getting at least $1.8 million, we are able to provide you with a balanced preliminary budget. That concludes this portion of the presentation. Any questions regarding the PowerPoint?
This, I'm sorry, let me see here, Mr. Doherty, then Mr. Martin. Then Mr. DeMello.
Yes, thank you. I just have a question about planning forward. I'm sorry. I have a question about planning forward and that is the memo that you provided to the members of the school committee is an already agreed upon initiative on the part of the Senate and the House. So it'll be recommended for vote clearly. But there's been some, a pretty hard work that's been done in order to get to that point where they're increasing chapter 70 money, creating that $40 million reserve fund for, to deal with lower enrollment that you have addressed on several pages of the PowerPoint presentation. So I'm wondering if you are already in a planning mode for the additional Student Opportunity Act funding. So they're going in the aggregate to a six-year model rather than a seven-year model. So whatever we missed last year, we'll get in the next coming year. So are you planning forward? That's really the question.
I just want to make sure you're done with your question, Mrs. Doherty. Are you all set?
Well, yes, thank you.
I have a habit of speaking over people and I'm trying to be a better listener. I'm a work in progress. So, so yes, we have been planning, we have been planning. Mrs. Moynihan and I, Mr. Barada and I, Mr. Byron has been lending a hand in managing our grants and doing a very thoughtful and thorough job. We've also met with our principals. So we have been discussing with our leadership, what are those needs that we would like to see? And how we would utilize our ESR funding? And now that we anticipate some additional chapter 70 dollars, we'll be able to mix and match or kind of move pieces aside or move pieces around without planning. So I planned when we meet on April 28th to share with you, what are those positions? What are those resources that our leaders have been asking for? And how I feel we can do a lot, if not most, of what they're asking for in a way that is sustainable over a truly three-year period utilizing the grant funding? And then how we can build or what positions we would build into our budget long-term?
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. I have a couple of questions. Any chance of putting slide four back up on the screen? Steve. Way back in the beginning.
I'll have to reformat this presentation so that it's fixed. I apologize for that.
That's okay. I just want to pick on the middle school elementary grade level, 103 students we lost from last year. And the reason I want to just, and I mean pick on, I just want to refer to that group. Because those students, if my interpretation is correct, those students were with us in 2019.
Yes. Yes.
Where'd they go?
So as we, this was my slide. So a lot of, so a lot of students at the elementary school level, a lot of parents chose to homeschool their students.
So once they're homeschooled, they're no longer part of our school system?
Correct. Some parents chose to enroll their children in virtual academies.
Okay.
Right, which they're no longer part of our school system. So that's where a majority of our students went. And unfortunately, some students, like many urban districts, some students, we are still tracking them down.
So the student enrollment held harmless figure of 2.1 million. If we hadn't lost any students, then that 2.1 million would show up in chapter 70 rather than a whole harmless figure.
Correct.
Okay, that answers that question for me. Steve, could you go to slide 21?
Excuse me, point of information, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Can we go back to slide four? And the point of information is that I'm not sure that the, the numbers are correct. Because from 19 to 20, it actually increased 103, not decreased. If you look above, the total number of students in 19 decreased from 8113 to 7953. So am I missing something or something not correct?
No, I'm gonna have to go back and double check that, Mr. DeMello. I think that's a typo.
I didn't look at that, Mr. DeMello. I just looked at the negative 103. And by the way, the only reason I, I referred to that group of students is because those students have what I still think is called a SUCID. They have a state identification number, so we can track those kids as to where they go.
And unfortunately, Mr. Martin, many urban centers such as Taunton, we are unable to track them. We are unable to track some students. There is a small population that many schools have not been able to track. And we'll check that number when we get to the foundation budget enrollment slide.
Okay, but you still answered my question. If we could go to slide 21. And I think you did an excellent job explaining net school spending. I just want to look at it in a different light. There's three figures in that triangle. Two of them are set by the state, which we have no control over. One is set by the local government, the city. So in order for us to meet the 106 million in net school spending, if the state's going to give us 68.5, then in order to meet 106 million, the city would have to give us 38.1 million. And this is where Mr. Cabral and Ms. Moynihan get together with the city budget manager and the mayor and negotiate that city's figure. Because as he alluded in some of the following slides, if that figure goes below 38.1 million, then that 106.6 million required net school spending goes lower. And we don't want it to go lower. We want it to go higher. But we can't change the 106 million and we can't force the state to give us more money. And obviously, we can't force the city to give us more money either. We have to negotiate that. Well, I didn't say we, the administration has to negotiate that. But what I want to just comment on, and Mr. Cabral talked about this later on in his presentation, which was excellent, by the way. In FY19, net school spending average was 129%. In FY20, it was 132%. So we want to build those numbers up to get closer to the middle rather than closer to the bottom. I mean, we're at the bottom of too many things. We need, we need to somehow make improvements and build ourselves up to more of a, I know we're an urban district, but we need to get out of the, out of the basement, basically. We're very close to the basement and that's no reflection on the city. Because we have a city that has a lot of needs. It's just, I just wanted to point that out. The only figure we can change in that triangle is the figure on the right, lower right. And that's through negotiations with the mayor and the superintendent. And I believe that takes care of my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Let me see here. Mrs. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mr. Cabral and Mrs. Moynihan, very good job putting this together. Sometimes too much information can get confusing and sometimes people at home will have a hard time following this, but I appreciate all the work. So just a couple of, couple of points and questions. With the federal stimulus funds, okay, so let's break it down. We have the ESER one, ESER two. Are both of those in-house fully accounted for in our numbers? That's the 1.8 in the 7.6 million.
When you say accounted for in our numbers, Mr. DeMello, you mean in our budget or have we received that funding?
Well, let's start with the 1.8. Has that been received and fully expensed?
Mrs. Moynihan, have we expended CVRF? Are we close to expanding?
We have, we have expended all of CVRF. Yes, and also, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. We've also spent up down our remote learning technology grant of $640,000. And then on the ESER one, as we stated in, when we did the preliminary budget for the revol, for the revenue, for the FY22 revenue, I stated that we had for, and I apologize, I'm looking through this multiple page document.
ESER two, the amount of 703,000.
ESER two, hold on a minute, and I'm sorry, is it ESER two?
So ESER.
FY22.
Mr. DeMello, ESER one has almost been expended.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral.
ESER one has almost been completely expended based on the last grants report that we received.
Okay.
So the only funding that we have received, that we have not started spending yet, is the state coronavirus prevention program. We are holding that funding for when we implement pool testing. And that's the amount 508,000, but we can also utilize that funding for technology purchases as well. That's anything that's COVID related. We will be applying for ESER two or the CARES Act two, sorry. We'll be applying for that. I'll probably be submitting that application shortly after we meet as a group. That's, the application is not due until July 30th.
And just for the public at home, that's the 7.6 million you're referring to, correct?
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Yes, ESER two is 7.6. We will apply for that funding to be used in fiscal '22, so 20, the next school year and following school year in fiscal '23. That grant application is due July 30th. And we have not yet received the American Rescue Plan, which is just over $17 million. And I want to say that's an estimate. And that funding, we can expend through December of 2024.
Wonderful. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello, you are correct on, on slide 25. It did say ESER two, it's for a carry of 703,000. It should say ESER one, so I do apologize for that. It should be ESER two has not been received. It has been earmarked for Taunton Public Schools, but it has not been received.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that explanation. So that's good news. And today with the communication from Representative Doherty on behalf of the, both the House and the Senate Ways and Means Chairs, we have extra money coming above and beyond what we just discussed, correct?
We, I anticipate we will have additional dollars. We just don't know how much yet. I think in the email I put to you, Roger Hatch, who used to oversee finance for the Department of Elementary and Second Education, he's going to run an analysis. So I'm hoping to have something in my hands just as soon or hopefully just as quick as Representative Doherty gets it in your hands.
Great, wonderful. And the last point I want to make, and it's a concerning point, is on slide 29, I don't want to refer to slide 29, that's fine. There's a 4% of our total education budget that's allocated to Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie. The total number is just under $4 million. Is it possible we can get a breakdown of what's going to Bristol Plymouth and what's going to Bristol Aggie? And the reason I mention that is because the Massachusetts Municipal Association just reported out through the federal stimulus dollars that counties are getting money. And Bristol County is one of the six still existing counties in Massachusetts that operate as county government. I believe their whole operating budget is just about 32 or 33 million dollars. Yet those six counties are getting almost $400 million. So if there's some relief that we can, I don't know if that comes through the superintendent of public schools or through the mayor, Mayor O'Connell and her office to tap into those county dollars, which if you divide 400 million by six, well, do the math. There's going to be a lot of millions of dollars coming to Bristol County that we could probably offset part of that 4% of our operating budget. So if we could for the next meeting or through an email, Mr. Cabral, get a breakdown of how much of that 4 million goes to Bristol Plymouth, how much goes to Bristol Aggie? And start the process of tapping into Bristol County government, those dollars to offset our 4% of 92-plus million dollars. That's my request. So I guess through the mayor's office, we can also seek that out. So that's all I have for now. Thank you once again for these, for this presentation. I think with today's news, we're going to have to revisit this again very, very soon. And I appreciate this as a finance person, I really appreciate this and the work from Mrs. Moynihan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. We're moving in the right direction right from the start here. Hopefully it continues. Any other questions of the committee? Okay, thank you. We'll move along now to item F, the superintendent's report.
Is there a motion for that, Mr. Souza? Do we need a motion to receive and accept?
I think it's just a presentation. So on this one, I don't think, well, the only motion I, and I don't even know if we have to make it is, do we want to let the legislative delegations know that we would support and send them this budget presentation to the Hold Harmless, the, continue the, how should I say this? Helping us to hold harmless the enrollment deduction. Should we make, we can make a motion to send the delegation this budget and have the superintendent send them a letter that we're in support of that, the whole Hold Harmless, any Hold Harmless funds they could give us?
Actually, Mr. Souza, I already signed off on a letter from MASSS and, and the and the South Coast Roundtable Superintendent's Association. I'm on two letters, but I can, I'd be happy to share the, I think, I think it would be, if they haven't seen it already, maybe I can have a talk with Mrs. Doherty after. If she feels that the PowerPoint would be helpful to help the local delegates understand the impact on our community, I would be happy to share the PowerPoint with them.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I'll let you handle that through the legislative, Ms. Doherty.
Yeah, I just want to point out again in the memo that was sent to the superintendent earlier today, $40 million has been set aside to alleviate the problem with the lower enrollment, notwithstanding the Hold Harmless. And it also includes transportation money and every district is eligible to receive those funds as needed. So the House Ways and Means, the Joint Ways and Means Committee is really planning ahead in anticipation of the financial pushback that districts are beginning and continue to make regarding the enrollment issue. So everybody I talked to was on board with supporting the concern.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. We'll let the superintendent continue to advocate through his channels and that sounds very good. Mr. Cabral, continue with the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. I'll start off by saying I don't think I've had as many elbow bumps as I've had in a long time on Monday. So on Monday, as you know, we had the pleasure of welcoming back our kindergarten through grade five students. I visited all our elementary schools as well as all our middle schools that received fifth graders and my elbow sore. So a lot of happy faces, a lot of grateful teachers. I can't tell you how many teachers came up to me socially distanced, of course, and we're thankful to have their kids back in front of them. And I can't tell you how many students were smiling behind those masks. So it was a great day for the town public schools, but again, we need to continue to be very thoughtful and practical and continue to adhere to the strict guidance that we are receiving as far as social distancing and mask wearing. And I want to reiterate to the public that we have not to this, to date, we have not had any reports of in-school or on-bus transmission in our buildings or on our buses, our buildings and our buses, our schools continue to be, to be very, very safe due to the mitigation efforts we have taken since the beginning of this pandemic. And it's continuing to work and will continue to, you know, to make changes and, and address whatever is needed moving forward. So as you are aware, you know, our successful reentry started with surveying our parents to identify who was going to return in person and who was going to remain remote. We will be providing additional information to parents regarding potential changes in the timeframe for potential changes to parents who for some reason have decided that maybe remote is a better option versus sending their kids in person. So again, making those changes, it's not as quick as flipping a switch. It does require time and planning on our part. We all know the amount of time and effort that went into preparing to open our building. So if we are going to start moving kids around again, it's going to take some time and planning in order to do it. We cannot just flip a switch and make that change. So we will be communicating now the time finds and the time periods and what's required to our families. And we also want to remind parents that this is not a yo-yo, that once a decision is made, that's a decision that we expect our families to adhere to. Again, knowing that these are very hard decisions to make, but once a decision is made, we need our families to adhere to the decision that is being made because it has an impact and a ripple effect, not only on the student, but on the other students and also on the teachers who are teaching our kids. So we want to commend our principals, our custodians, our teachers, our parent volunteers. And we also need to commend our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Brenda Monahan. I don't know how she did it. I'm not going to ask, but Mrs. Monahan was able to secure all the additional desks that were needed to be able to socially distance our students in the classrooms, but more importantly, to social distance our students in the cafeteria. If you visit any of our schools, you will find two or three dining sites in our buildings. And we had to purchase desks and luckily we got into the pipeline before the logjam. Emails continue to circulate on my listserv with superintendents and Mrs. Monahan's listserv with business managers. For everyone's just like scrambling, trying to find anyone, begging anyone for desks. So Mrs. Monahan and our vendors, and also I got to, I have to thank the diocese of Far River for providing us with desks as well in some of the old Catholic schools in our cities. So great job to everyone on those efforts to secure the much-needed equipment and also the much-needed P P E. Because again, we're trying to run a school 80% capacity at the middle school and then elementary school, while also adhering to the social distance guidelines. So again, it looks very different. So we've already talked about the P P E. What I, what I, what I saw when visiting our schools, it was like being in the first, like the first day of school all over again. It was a lot of getting to know each other. There was a lot of walking the building, going over the fire drills, going over the routines, going over the different protocols due to COVID. So I had that vibe or that sense of first day of school all over again, and I'm looking forward to getting back into our middle schools next week when the sixth and seventh graders come back and I can't wait to visit the high school when we start returning our high school students. And we need to commend our transportation vendor, H and L Bloom. You know, they're still working on finalizing our middle school routes and our high school routes, but our elementary school routes are done. And we also need to continue to remind and thank our parents, you know, for the tremendous amount of support that we're receiving. I had, I, there was an email I received yesterday, a parent just thanking us for allowing their kid to come back to school five days a week. And as I told the parent, there isn't a teacher and there isn't a superintendent, a school committee member out there who doesn't want their kids or doesn't want our kids in five days a week. It's just, it's a process. It's a very long and hard process that I think we've been successfully navigating throughout the pandemic. So as always, you know, we're going to continue to revisit, we're going to continue to retool and we'll, we'll make adjustments. We know it's not perfect, but we're going to do everything that we can in our power to make this the best school year for our students and for our teachers and for our families. I'll just go quickly over some curriculum updates. So I need to commend Mr. Barata and his team of educational leaders. So I believe Mrs. Rogers, Mrs., Dr. Rogers, sorry, Ms. Schaub's, who's the math curriculum supervisor for eight to 12, Dr. Rogers oversees K two seven math coordinator, or Jordan Veloy's, who's the high school eight to 12 science curriculum coordinator, and Ms. Liz Palowski, who's the K two seven science coordinator. They are working very hard to roll out and pilot new curriculum in math and science. So in the area of math, we have over 90 educators piloting or participating in the pilot. So they are going to pilot four curriculum or four different series, illustrative math, K through five, illustrative math, six to eight, San Francisco Unified School District, K through five, and Eureka Math, K through five. So the 90 educators will, will be introduced or get a snapshot or get a peek of some of the resources and get some training on how to successfully utilize the curriculum. They'll also get some professional development and how to utilize the curriculum in learning centers with our English language learners and also with our students with disabilities and the supports that each curriculum provides. And it'll be a very thoughtful process. The committee is going to be meeting on April 12th to develop a common rubric that'll be utilized throughout the four different series. And then on May 27th, they're going to make recommendations based on the rubrics. I think we might, might need to find a new position for Ms. Palowski as she was able to secure over $100,000 in grants. So Ms. Palowski was able to secure $84,000 from the One Eight Foundation to help successfully implement the Open Sigh curriculum, which our students in middle school and high school are utilizing. So that, that was exciting news to receive that funding. And I'm very excited to announce that all three of our middle schools will have Project Lead the Way up and running in our schools next year. And Ms. Palowski was able to secure $58,000 in grant funding to roll out Project Lead the Way at Parker Middle School next year. So we have addressed the issue of equity. All three middle schools will have Project Lead the Way, which is one of the leading STEM STEAM curriculums in the nation. We'll have it right here in Taunton. So we'll continue to chip away at my STEM goal, our STEM goal, sorry. Now, the top public school social emotional supports, Mrs. Perry, Director of Transportation Student Services and Dr. Linda Watt, who's one of our school psychologists, continue to do some great work with our community input team. They continue to meet. I identified this or the community identified this as a immediate need during my long, during my strategic planning when I was doing my entry meetings and we immediately launched the community input team that, I mean, even though it's shrunken numbers, they still continue to actively meet and they're doing some amazing work. So we've identified a curriculum that we will be utilizing throughout our school system, which is Mind Up. They are developing a map with lessons that teachers can utilize throughout the school year. And they're also providing our staff with professional development. And I believe Mrs. Watt has also secured a grant through DESI where we'll be able to survey our students and assess where they are in terms of social emotional learning. So I know publicly, we sometimes get beat up a little that we're not doing enough around mental health, but this group's been meeting for three years. So we want to make sure that when we implement or address the social emotional needs of our students, that we are listening to our stakeholders and that we implementing a current, a curriculum that is comprehensive K through 12 so that there is connection as the students move from grade to grade, school to school, or grade level to grade level. But in the packet, I also provided you with a communication from Mrs. Perry that we sent to parents regarding the new attendance changes. And I also provided you with some information regarding the kindergarten registration portal, which will again, will be a combination of online registration, which opens on April 26th. There will be in-person registration opportunities beginning on June 1st. That'll take place at the family welcome center and our schools will offer, also have some open nights or open house nights for parents to register their students. So with that, that concludes my reports.
Mayor, you going to take back over?
Okay.
Yeah, could just couldn't get to my button there. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Is there, oh, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the question I'm going to ask is more for the public than it is for the members of the school committee. But now that we've opened our schools and we continue to open our schools, we're still not allowing use of facilities to take place. Is that correct? Within the buildings?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Martin, because I was going to put that, I was going to put that on an agenda for something for us to discuss. Right now, the only thing we are allowing is use of outdoor facilities, athletic fields, because it's easier to monitor social distance and adhere to the guidelines. We have not allowed, and I don't anticipate we will allow the use of our facilities indoors well until after we have ended the school year.
Thank you. And I assume that was your, going to be your answer, but I, I've had some concerns or not concerns or questions from people in the public who have used our facilities in the past because we've always taken pride in the fact that we build these buildings for the community. And we've always let them in, you know, weekends and nights and so forth to use our facilities. But under the circumstances, I think what you just said is a, is a smart move.
Yeah, and we just received the guidance from the state on activities. And it's, it's going to be very difficult, very difficult for us to carry out even our end of the year in-house activities, graduation, send-offs. So unfortunately, we're not at that point yet. So that's why we wanted to continue to encourage everyone in our community, you know, follow the guidance. We're in this together. We're almost there. Let's get shots in the arms, wear your masks and let's maintain six feet of social distance.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm all set.
You're welcome. Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess Mr. Cabral threw you to Mr. Barata. I'm just curious about whether or not we have data that would tell us where in Massachusetts, for example, the four pilot projects that we're proposing are being either piloted or implemented in this regard.
We, we can provide the board with that information. Ms. Doherty, I know myself, Ms. Palowski, Mr. Veloy, Dr. Rogers and Donna Schaws are taking place in a DESI sponsored network of multiple districts across the Commonwealth. And through there, they're developing not only the rubrics, but the efficiency of conducting curriculum revisions. And some have identified which sources they were doing. So we can give you some of that information perhaps at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And if I could just mention too, I think Mr. Barata forgot to mention that these curriculums were also vetted through curate and also vetted through Ed Reports, correct, Chris?
That is correct. And that's part of the process which DESI is advocating for, which makes all some common sense for us as well. As we adopted what was highly regarded by Ed Reports and curate with the Wonders Program, that's why we selected those top programs who rose to the top to begin with to examine rather than a wider swath of programs which didn't meet the criteria of either Ed Reports or curate.
Thank you. Do we need to accept the report? Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, met opposed, so voted. Thank you. Administration, administrative business, anything on the staffing report?
Steven placed on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Met opposed, so voted? Thank you. Subcommittee reports, finance and law subcommittee, Mr. Martin?
Finance and law subcommittee made earlier this, this afternoon with myself, Mr. Souza, Mr. Fiore. Also in attendance were Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda was student activity. Town High School is looking to replace $19,170.80 in their student activity account. And that was approved by the Finance and Law Subcommittee. The second item was bills payable. We had two, one for F Y 20 and one for F Y 21. The F Y 20 was $4,426.20 in coverage list. F Y 21 was $714,263.46 for a total bills payable in the amount of $718,689.48. And that was also approved by unanimous vote of the Finance and Law Subcommittee. And finally, the third item, Ms. Monahan gave us a facilities update. The Reading Street Series, unfortunately, we have been unable, DECA students have been working their butt off trying to find a recipient, but unfortunately we can't. So they're presently being boxed up and they'll be disposed of. The second item she mentioned was the oh, let's see, can't read my own writing. Well, let me go to the third item because I can't read the second item. The third item is the schools are doing deep cleaning two days a week in conjunction with us going back full-time rather than just on Wednesdays when they were hybrid. And that's going well. And let's see, Brenda, can you help me with the third item? Update the
I will be happy to help you read your own writing. So we had stated that we have tried to go ahead and reach out to the engraver that we had originally, we originally had reached out to engrave the granite at the Oakland complex, but it seems that the vendor may have gone out of business as we are not able to go get through to that number. So we are going ahead and looking for other vendors that could provide us an updated quote so we can get this work done very quickly.
Thank you very much because honestly, I cannot read other than the word the in everything I wrote. And that's a report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Motion, we accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discretion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. Just curiosity kills the cat. Mrs. Monahan threw you, Madam Mayor. Page 10, Office of the Inspector General. When I see that terminology, it kind of quibble in my chair here. What is that for? I know it's only $595, but is it an acronym?
It is a cost for a class to, for services that the Attorney General does put on. It's one of the classes like I would take for the my M C P P O license. So it is a class that the Attorney General's office does use.
Okay, I'm relieved. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Brenda, I believe it's for those procurement classes, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, it is. One of our food services, the Assistant Food Service Director, Glenn Mata, is going in to attain his M C P P O license. So it'll be two of us in the district.
So there is a motion. You're welcome. Motion in second on the floor. All those in favor?
Roll call.
I was waiting for you to say that. On a roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
You're on mute, Christine.
Yes, I know, Mr. Martin. I got muted by the host, so I didn't unmute. I apologize. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Unit A Teacher Subcommittee, March 18th, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Uiday Subcommittee met myself, Mrs. Fagan, Mrs. Almeida, Mr. Cabral, Mrs. Monahan, Attorney Mitchell, Attorney Costa, met with you today. We have a tentative agreement on in-person learning. And we're waiting for the T E A to ratify. And then we will bring it back to the committee for further ratification on our end, but we have wait for them. That is the report of the Uiday Subcommittee.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Mayor, request a roll call.
Okay, on a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan, please.
Mr. Artie?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes 62. Well, we're two present. Special Programs Subcommittee, Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Special Program Subcommittee met on April 1st. Myself as chair, Mr. DeMello, Mr. Palowski as members. Myself as Chair, Mr. DeMello, Mr. Palowski as members, and Mr. Cabral were present. We met to review the history of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council to try to address and respond to some questions and concerns that have been raised by the CPAC and to discuss possible remedies. Materials that were shared with the committee were the Department of Education Manual on Special Education on CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Councils. We also had their bylaws in hand. The Mass General Laws also refers to the role of the Advisory Council in, in a school district. And a memo that was presented to the school committee which precipitated this meeting that was sent by Judy Mulrooney to Mr. Cabral, and he shared that with us regarding school committee obligations to meet with CPAC, and that's what that memo was titled. So there were several questions that we discussed. Particular focus on communication with, communication by CPAC with families between and among schools regarding CPAC and with the Special Education Department. We also talked about workshops that have been presented, those that are our responsibility, meaning the school department's responsibility, and also those that have been run by CPAC over a period of time. So our school committee policy does not address CPAC and their role. So perhaps the school, the CPAC is by law supposed to present to the school committee an update on, at least an annual update on what it is that they're doing and what it is that they observe in terms of our special education programs. It was suggested by Mr. DeMello actually that perhaps we could have CPAC present to the school committee twice during the year and then meet with the Special Projects Subcommittee on the alternate months, probably a quarterly kind of meeting. And we also talked about an improved presence of CPAC on our website and their own website as well. And we decided that we would invite Judy Mulrooney, Special Education Director, and Heather Bailey-Gregorius, who is a co-chair of CPAC, and anyone else she cares to bring with her to discuss this further. One of the things that we talked about is the possibility of codifying the role and work of CPAC in ours, in our school committee policy. So we have set a meeting date, at least at this point, for April the fifteenth, where both of those persons will come in and will continue the discussion and obviously make recommendations back to this body. That's the completion of my report. If Mr. Palowski and Mr. DeMello care to add to that, that would be great. Not.
Motion to accept the report.
There's a motion to accept the report. Is there a second?
Mrs. Almeida made it.
Oh, she made it. Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted? Athletic Subcommittee, Mrs. Fagan?
Yep. Athletic Subcommittee met Monday, this past Monday afternoon with Mr. Otta Viennelli. And what we were given was a list of the spring season, which is going to begin on April twenty-sixth of this year. I know it's late. And the teams that we're gonna have are baseball, softball, boys volleyball, outdoor spring track, boys and girls, tennis, boys and girls, lacrosse, boys and girls, cheer competitive, and unified track. The one thing that where there is a hold-on right now is wrestling. The MIAA has not yet in, has not yet dealt with the modifications necessary to begin wrestling, and Mr. Otta Viennelli told me that they're looking to have a meeting either the end of the week by Friday or by Monday. So this is, that's, and then they'll give us the beginning week for wrestling. On the other hand, the, all, all the, all these sports that have tournaments, they're gonna be open tournaments, so everybody can participate, if anybody can participate if they want to. And we're very, they're gonna follow all the protocols they did when they instituted the previous season stuff that they were doing. And what they're doing is they, if there's an issue with COVID, they've separated the teams because they have varsity level, junior varsity, freshmen, to prevent spread. So they've really been doing an outstanding job, and we approved as a committee the idea of moving forward for April twenty-sixth. So the seasons are gonna be shortened. There won't be as much play. But I think from, from what Mark has spoken to me about Mr. Otta Viennelli, they really wanna see something happen for these kids. So, and, and as a group, myself, Mr. DeMello, and Mr. Martin, we really feel that this is something good for these kids to have. So that's my report. If either Mr. Martin and Mr. DeMello would like to add anything?
Were there any motions made?
Yes, to accept the report.
No, I believe we made a motion in Athletic Subcommittee to approve the.
Yeah, to approve it.
To approve the recommendation of Mr. Otta Viennelli?
Yes, we did.
That would.
So I'll make a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted? Long-range planning and school property, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. So on Monday, April seventh at four PM, the Subcommittee met, which consisted of myself as Chair, and Mr. Martin. Also in attendance was Ms. Doherty and Superintendent Cabral. We have fired five agenda items that we discussed, and for the five, we have made some recommendations, and I'll go through each one of them individually. So the first item was to revisit the school vestibule project that was put on hold due to COVID. As my colleagues remember, we were talking about updating some of the schools with the vestibules, not only for security purposes, but, you know, limiting public access, especially now through the, through the COVID times. So for that item, we, we made a recommendation to authorize the administration to begin planning for the vestibule work in our schools, to add the added layer of security and limit public access as we work through the pandemic. That was item number one. Number two.
Mr. DeMello, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Martin, sorry.
I believe we made a motion to authorize a superintendent to use up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of COVID-related money to get that process off the ground.
Correct. I'm sorry, I'm working off three sheets of paper here, and that was correct. We did authorize the superintendent to move forward with up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project through COVID relief monies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. That's why you were there. I see that. Number two, we at once discussed a study put out by NESRA. If you recall, my colleagues, we had this beautiful presentation with four different schematics, and that was to revisit the turf, replacing the turf on the football field and track, adding the multi-use for softball fields and a practice field, and we had, what else do we have here? The turf, the track, the dual softball fields and multipurpose outfield, and the fourth item was the the practice field that was closest to William Street. So those four projects were again put on hold, and the recommendation was to authorize the administration to contact, once again, NESRA, the engineering firm for updated project costs, so that the topic can be referred to our entire committee for future planning. This was prepared to us, I don't know the dates here, but it was way back when, and I'm sure things have definitely changed. So that was the outcome of that item. Mr. Martin, anything I missed on that one?
Nope, you're doing fine.
Number three, we discussed the core repair project to send to the MSBA to expand the Taunton High School gym band and the CVTE and classroom space. If you recall, we also had a meeting that was about the expansion and what the proposal was for the seventy-two, seven thousand square foot addition between the A and C house and the twenty-two thousand eight hundred foot square addition that abutted the theater and the Taunton High School fieldhouse. And that would serve for the multiple purposes that I just described, which is not only the classroom space, expanding the CVTE, which is, I think, critical, and the gym and the ROTC and band and all the other extracurriculars that we offer. The recommendation was to authorize the administration to submit a statement of interest on behalf of the Taunton Public Schools to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is the MSBA, for a potential expansion as noted. That was item number three. Mr. Martin, anything on that?
All set.
Great. Number four, by the way, this was a very efficient meeting. It lasted a total of forty-five minutes to cover these five items, so we did a lot of work in a very short span. Number four was to develop a schematic for the third floor of the Taunton Alternative High School. And we discussed that on multiple occasions. We know that the roof is pretty sound and that the third floor was never developed when we took over that building. So the recommendation was to authorize the administration to work with CVTE Department to develop a third-floor schematic of the Taunton Alternative High School for classroom use. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. And the last item, item number five, was to continue exploring the viability of relocating Central Office to the former Taunton Nursing Home site. And we really didn't go beyond that. The superintendent, of course, will need to have a conversation with Mayor O'Connell and her staff and the appropriate parties that she designates to continue the conversation regarding that future use. And I think that's all I have to add. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And I'm sorry if I missed it. On the first item you mentioned about improving vestibule security.
Yes.
Said, so there's two hundred and fifty thousand allocated to that?
There was a recommendation to authorize, the motion was to authorize the superintendent to use up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For how many schools was it Superintendent Cabral?
I believe it would impact I believe it would impact eight, eight or nine of our schools.
Eight or nine.
So my question is, I was just curious, is that a recurring expense that is going to be built into the budget? That's just a one-time?
One-time cost. One-time cost, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
I just want to add to, Mr. DeMello said about the third floor of Kohanet School. I think most people know that when the courts took that building over, they ran the elevator to the third floor, so that part of the, of the problem has already been solved. And also, the third floor was sprinkled. So one of the comments I made at the, at his meeting was the fact that I believe the third floor is primarily, except for the bathrooms, cosmetic. As far as, you know, going into the classrooms and designing them and updating them and so forth. Obviously, the bathrooms are very outdated. So it should not, it should not, of course, everything changes. It should not be a great expense to bring that third floor up to, up to par. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, we're all set.
Motion, we accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Mrs. Almeida, do you have a question? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Hang on, if we can get a second, then I'll go on. Motion made.
Second.
Second. On discussion, Mrs. Almeida?
Okay. My question is, why are we gonna make classrooms on the third floor of the Kohanet School, of the Alternative High School? When I don't think we're gonna expand that program because we have enough students in that school now. That's what I've been told. We're not expanding the program. So my question is, why do we need the classrooms? And originally, when we had the courts do, allow them to use that school, and it was given back to the school department, it was with the idea that the central office would go on the third floor of that building. So I don't see an added expense at this point where money is scarce that we look into the nursing home and have that additional expense for the school department. So what was the rationale of putting classrooms on that third floor instead of going with the plan to put Central Office there?
I'd be happy to address that if you'd like, Mr. DeMello.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
So, so.
I think the answer's the same, the dollars.
Yeah, so with, if you remember when we had the discussion, and again, I need to have a conversation with the mayor, and because I know a lot has changed over the year and a half, so the nursing home is a viable outlet to relocate all of Central Office, so we can successfully house all of our Central Office administrators and the people that Central Office supervise under one roof and also provide space for food services in their department, while also providing space and green space for extended day to operate in a fully accessible, handicap-accessible sprinkle, sprinkled, sprinkler facility. And if we did bring in special programming into that facility, we also have opportunities for mainstreaming students in a general education setting with Chamberlain being within walking distance and Freeman being within walking distance. And I do know two collaboratives would be very interested in partnering with Taunton if we were able to secure that facility. And again, we don't know the condition of the facility, and that's a conversation I need to have with the mayor and, and her staff, because it has been over a year since I last stepped foot in that facility. So from a practical sense, it could house us all under one roof. It would also possibly lend into redo, lend itself to reduced special education out-of-district costs or serve as a revenue generator if we, if we, if we did rent the space. And it also provides us with green space for students who are in that facility to have access to. Regarding the Alternative High School, I think when we go and get into our budget workshop on the twenty-eighth, and we talk about the needs of our students, I think it'll make more sense as to why we talked about the Alternative High School and renovating that third floor. The other issue that we need to be mindful of, it's a, it's a great building, the Alternative High School, but one of the, one of the bad things about the Alternative High School is parking. Mr. Delaney barely has enough space to currently satisfy or meet the demands of his staff on a regular school day. So that was kind of the rationale. If I missed anything, Greg, Joe, sorry, Mr. DeMello, Mr. Martin, please contribute.
Parking was gonna be my issue.
My, my, my only add, thank you, Mayor. My only add is that there's still a reimbursement that's possible from the MSBA, which is eighty-twenty, is that Mr. Cabral, eighty-twenty split?
Correct.
So there's, there's small dollars that would cost us at, at the end of the day, Mrs. Almeida, to renovate that.
And then the other piece regarding dollars too, if the, if the extended day program is at the nursing home and food service is at the nursing home, they have revolving accounts to do whatever renovations would need to be done in those departments or to the envelope of the building if it was needed. So that, again, it's all part of a larger picture. And the, if we, and part of my desire to relocate Central Office is to provide additional opportunities for programming for our students. If we were to relocate Central Office, we would, we could accommodate two, say, early pre-K or two pre-K classrooms here at E-Pole, if we were to relocate Central Office. So again, it's about a larger picture of being able to provide universal pre-K to all our students in time. But again, we want to be mindful of all the, all the institutions that also provide that service, so we don't want to put anybody out of business. But I think if we were all working together, now we can make sure that kids in their neighborhood school attend the school they would be attending as pre-K students and then matriculate to kindergarten. So just a big picture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is second on the floor, Mr. Martin?
If I could just add too, and again, it was a forty-five minute meeting, but it was very, very resourceful. The other thing that we brought up about NARTNAV, we have two beautiful facilities on NARTNAV. But those facilities are pretty much buildings and parking. There is not a lot of green space in those two facilities because of the size of the facilities and the, and the tightness of the, of the project. So if we were somehow to acquire the, the nursing home, in addition to what Mr. Cabral has said about the programs that are being offered there, there's an awful lot of green space that could be provided to all three facilities, not just the current nursing home facility. And I just wanted to add that because it did come up in, in our discussion.
And you just reminded me, Mr. Martin, last piece, I promise, Mayor, another, in addition, a potential for an additional egress, which has always been a complaint in that facility.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted? New business? Open Meeting Law Complaint?
That's me, Madam Mayor. I have a statement to read from Attorney Costa that I need to read at the open meeting as part of the agenda item. This communication is in regards to the above referenced Open Meeting Law Complaint, which is on the school committee's, tonight, tonight's school committee agenda. The complaint alleges that the meeting of March tonight, uh, tonight's school committee agenda. The complaint alleges that the meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty-one was not broadcast and the public was not provided with any alternative means to view the meeting live. The governor's order sus- suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law issued March twelfth, twenty twenty, the governor's order requires public bodies that meet remotely to provide adequate alternative means of public access such as live stream, a Zoom link, telephone call in line, et cetera, to the meeting while the meeting is occurring. The adequate alternative means of access is required in order to allow the public to follow the meeting in real time. A public body may, and will providing real-time access to the meeting, post a video or transcript afterwards, but that is allowed if, for, only if for reasons of economic hardship and despite best efforts. It is not available to, available to provide the public the opportunity to watch or listen to the meeting in real time. While a video recording of the March tenth meeting was posted to the school department's website after the meeting, the meeting was not livestreamed or broadcast. Because the meeting was not livestreamed, broadcast or otherwise able to be followed by the public in real time, the requirement for real-time access was not met on March tenth, twenty twenty-one. Subsequent to tonight's school committee meeting, a response to the open meeting law complaint must be filed with the complainant in the office of the Attorney General. The complaint indicates that in response to the complaint, he would like the school committee to develop a plan that will ensure that all meetings are broadcast when in, when in-person attendance is not possible and include information on all postings about how the public can access the meeting. Based on all the above, our recommendation is that the response to this open meeting law complaint should include the following. Number one, an acknowledgement that there was no not in alternative means of access provided for the public to allow the March tenth twenty twenty-one meeting, as the meeting was not livestreamed or broadcast. And two, a commitment that future meetings will be broadcast and or livestreamed when in attend, when in-person attendance is not possible and that all postings will contain information on how the public can access the meeting. This office will prepare in response to the open meeting law complaint on behalf of the school committee and file the same as legally required. Our response will incorporate the above suggested provisions and will consider any other suggestions that the school committee provides. Regards, Matthew J. Costa Esquire, Gang Attorney, representing the Taunton School Committee, Taunton Public Schools. So they're handling the, the response and uh, I just, I had to read that for legality purposes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. American Association of School Personnel Administrators, I believe that would be Mr. Cabral, maybe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Oh, excuse me, Mrs. Doherty, did you have some, a comment?
I think she's.
Just, I just had a question of, of Mr. Sousa, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Doherty?
The complaint, Mr. Sousa.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Doherty, could you repeat that? I think you kind of froze a little bit.
To either the superintendent perhaps or Mr. Sousa. Uh, as the reader of the letter from Mr. Costa, who filed the complaint?
So, uh, 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 the school committee members were provided with a copy of the complaint uh via email uh this week, and the complaint was filed with the Taunton Education Association, James Quaiton's, president of Taunton Education Association.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sousa.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So uh, I'm proud to say that our work regarding, regarding hiring and social justice is being recognized not only within our region, in our state, but it's also being recognized on a national level. Uh, so Mrs. or Dr. Butts was recently asked to attend and present at the AASPA, which is the American Association of School Personnel Administrators, uh, this coming June. So I am asking the committee uh for your permission to authorize Mrs. Butts, and I'm still on the fence on whether or not I will attend because that's the last day of school. I really feel I need to be here. I'd like to be here for the kids on their last day and the staff, but I'd like to have, ask this committee to authorize the approval for Dr. Butts to travel and present our work that we have done here in Taunton Public Schools regarding hiring and social justice.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Madam Mayor, that'll be a roll call vote when it happens, please.
Thank you. On discussion, Mr. D'Amello.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Cabral, where is this conference being held?
In Denver, Colorado.
Denver, Colorado. Uh, uh, I'd like to add to the motion as long as uh the travel restrictions have been lifted as they presently are and adhere to all COVID nineteen-related uh restrictions, not only leaving the state, but coming back to the state as well. So considering Colorado and Massachusetts. That's two.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you requesting to add that to?
Yes, 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 I said add to the motion, please, yeah.
Well, who is the maker of the motion?
Friendly amendment, accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like, and I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has changed, um, and seconded. On a roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, Mr. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Plowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes, Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. D'Amello.
Yes.
And Chairman Sousa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Unfinished business, action item review.
I don't, I don't see any that changed, that we can change right now.
Uh, actually, Mr. Sousa, I apologize for interrupting you. Um, I think we can take the books off.
Oh, it's, oh, yes, I've, I've, yes, I saw that, but I just lost my paper, so.
All right, we can take the decker, trying to uh find a hole for the circle.
That's the last, that's the bottom, if I, there, that was the bottom one.
Yep. And then I would also say, I think it's the next item, we're gonna, on the unfinished business, we're gonna talk about the school committee planner. Uh, I think we can take um the strategic plan biannual update, as I've incorporated that into our planner.
Uh, motion to approve striking both of those.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, not opposed, so voted. MCAS update?
I'll ask Mr. Barra to give a quick overview on where we are with the MCAS update, which there's a calendar in your packet.
Sure, uh, very succinctly, uh, obviously, the state is moving forward, at least at this time with testing taking place. The test is used at the three through eight grade span, really is a diagnostic tool to assess student uh learning loss, whereas the high school obviously has a graduation component affiliated with that. Uh, Desi did come out with guidance on the, um, not only the competency determination uh allowances that our students can uh access for graduation requirements, but also the commissioner is going to be recommending that this year's eleventh graders not be required to take the MCAS test. Uh, so that's obviously good news. Uh, one aspect that ties into the reopening plan is, as we await Commissioner Riley's notification of when the state will require our high schoolers to return, uh, the MCAS testing will follow suit with that. Uh, Desi will not allow uh tests to be taken off school grounds, which means students have to take the test in person. As you're aware, we have students attending school now, five days a week. We also have remote students. So that's a challenge that we're gonna have to try to um overcome is how do we test those students who are remote, which means we're gonna have to have them in our buildings and plan that out. As has been said throughout tonight, not only by the committee members, but also by the administrators here, we can't credit our principals and our teachers enough of all the hard work and stress that they've been undertaking. We understand parent stress uh as well, but as central office, um we're very much appreciative and understand that although we throw a lot at them, we know the stress level is high, that they've been able to respond accordingly. So we will be working with our elementary principals to work on a testing schedule that makes sense. Again, a diagnostic component, uh, but they've opened up the uh, the window from May tenth to June eleventh to allow that testing to take place. In prior years, they gave specific windows of time to do it, in which all students across the district would take the time test simultaneously. That's one of the um allowances that Desi's providing, knowing that we'll try to uh provide these testing environments for students on a rolling basis per se. So more information is to be coming. Uh, again, um, I would say that you should know that not only the school committee made its um position felt about MCAS testing, Superintendent Cabral also signed off on and participated in the survey with other superintendents, uh, advocating for the use of our in-district assessments, which is map data, which I know we've talked about that, not only in curriculum and assessments, but also for funding. We have, uh, we utilize map testing, grades K through seven. Um, so that in itself, we administer the, the formative assessments three times a year. So we have a pretty good handle of our students' learning loss. So uh, Desi's um diagnostic test of MCAS will be an additional data point, but again, we feel that our in-house data pretty much will nail down what we have to address moving forward. Our curriculum coordinators, K-eight, uh, Delilah Mendoza, Becky Coette, Dr. Rogers, Elizabeth Plowski, uh, and also at the high school, all the curriculum supervisors have been looking at not only our formative assessments, final exams, our map data, our DIBELS data, looking back in prior years, looking at indicators of student success and weakness and adjusting accordingly. And as directed by the superintendent, each uh elementary building and middle school and also with the high school, is looking at uh formulating some type of summer acceleration camp or group uh studies based upon those areas of weakness. So again, that's all in-house work. We're also collaborating with the statewide system of support and tapping into their data banks as well to really provide our students with an opportunity to um stem the learning regression that's taken place from COVID. Thank you.
And the only thing I'll emphasize in addition to what Mr. Barada mentioned is I feel the last fifty-two, fifty-three days of school will be better spent engaging our students, assessing where our students are at, as Mr. Barada mentioned, so we can put together some very aggressive uh summer school programs, some accelerated programs to make up for the loss of learning, getting our kids back into the routine of being in person, being in our schools, and also engaging them uh where they are on a social and emotional health perspective. So that's where I believe our focus should be, not on an MCAS exam, which is really an autopsy, and I think we all know what the results would be at the end of the year. It wouldn't be what us, a true indicator of what our students are capable of achieving.
Thank you. Moving on, school committee planner.
So I put together or some updated the school committee planner. So I would just really ask the school committee to focus on the months of April, May, and June, and then on to Aug- July, August, and September. So for the months of April, and I thank everyone for getting back to us using our new uh tool, Doodle, or for reaching out to Wendy. So we will be meeting or having a finance and law meeting, I believe, Mr. Sousa on the twenty-first, five o'clock, finance and law, and five oh five, the regular meeting to approve the warrant. So, and on April twenty-eighth, we will have our school committee budget committee of the whole workshop, which will be in person in our library. And we will make accommodations for anyone who has medical or anyone who is unable to attend due, due to work reasons or other commitments. We will, we will figure out, or we will find out how you can attend in person or remotely, but that will be in person at the E-Pole Library on the twenty-eighth. In May, we will have our regular meeting on the fifth and the nineteenth. And on the twenty-sixth, we're actually gonna start planning for a school committee recognition. And that school committee recognition will be dedicated to COVID heroes, uh, those who have stepped up above and beyond uh during this last year or throughout this pandemic. And depending on the release of the House two budget and how quickly we can revise and update our presentation, we'll have a second budget meeting either on the fifth of May or the nineteenth of May. In June, we'll have our two regular meetings. I do want to note that graduation this year will be held on June sixth. And we did receive the uh event guidance, and we will be following that guidance and planning accordingly uh in aiming for an in-person uh graduation this year. So we're very excited to be working towards that, and we cannot commend the high school and their staff for all the hard work. On June, oh, looks like we have a, sorry, looks like we have a typo, so I apologize. Uh, on July fourteenth, we are tentatively planning one meeting in July, but I would ask the committee to keep those Wednesdays open if possible in the event that we do need to meet, because we don't know what could take place uh due to COVID or any other uh matters. So July fourteenth will be our one regular meeting. Uh, and it gets a little tricky because of the uh Fourth of July and the way the Fourth of July lands this year. In August, we will have our regular meeting on August eleventh. And again, if there is a need to meet, please keep those Wednesdays open as much as possible. The twelfth and the thirteenth will be our annual retreat, which I am planning right now to be in person. I always welcome the school committee to attend if you are able to. And the focus of our, of our two-day retreat will be strategic planning so that I can report out as part of our biannual reporting uh in September or October, depending on how quickly we can update that, that document. And then in September, we have our first two meetings. So again, we're already planning for next year, hard to believe it. So that's what we have for the school committee planner, and we'll continue to update as we move further along.
And, and Mr. Cabral, if I could say, um, I don't think they were in the packet because we they made the package. So Wendy, if you could just provide updated copies in the next packet, that would be good. Thank you.
I believe they were emailed to everybody, correct?
I, she could provide hot, we could provide hot copies to everyone in the next packet. Uh, thank you, Wendy.
And we'll make sure to put a magnet so you can hang it on your refrigerator.
I have a place for it waiting.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me, Mrs. Almeida.
The recognition, is that gonna be in person?
So that's what we're shooting for. So it'll be a very limited number of people, and we would aim to hold it in the high school cafeteria. So that's what we're planning on. If not, then we would, if we, if it's, if we are unable to get approval from the Board of Health and our nurse manager, then we'll have to accommodate, or maybe we'll have to reschedule until such a time we can. But I would like to do something. I think it's long overdue to recognize. No, um, and I know there are so many heroes, we could probably be, be there all night, but I'd really like to focus on those individuals who have really stepped up above and beyond that deserve to be recognized. And then at a later date, we can also have another recognition and continue to recognize and honor all those people who have worked uh and sacrificed so much during this pandemic on the city and on the school side.
I, I think that's wonderful. However, are we gonna have more than twenty people in a row?
We, again, I want to keep it really limited to those individuals who have really stepped up and gone above and beyond. So it would be limited probably, and I'd have to calculate the numbers and anticipate guests. We're probably looking at one or two per school if you want to keep it tight, you want to keep it tight. And we would also have to schedule it to make sure that people can come in and go out similar to how, um, you know, some of the events I've attended uh that have been in person, where we have a, a, a holding or receiving area, or we have people staged in different parts of the high school cafeteria.
So if we want to attend, can we attend remotely?
Luckily, we have, I know, I haven't spoken to him yet, but I know Mr. Jakes, those, those wheels are turning up there. And I'll probably owe him a couple cases of Mountain Dew, but we will figure out how to have people attend in person and remotely.
Okay, because you've got to remember, some people are compromised, Mr. Cabral.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no press time, and is there going to be an executive session?
No need.
Okay. All right, and then we move to Ann.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a great week, everyone. Stay safe. Have a good weekend, everyone.